Hello and welcome, everyone. Thank you for tuning into this event from the New Lines Institute of Strategy and Policy. My name is Emily Prey, and I'm a senior analyst here, and I'm looking forward to moderating this panel today. Today's event is brought to you by New Lines Rohingya Legal Forum, and I'm delighted to be speaking with Aaron Farrell Rosenberg, Thun Kin, and Mike Becker to discuss the public hearings at the ICJ that took place on Monday and this week, which addressed a jurisdictional dispute arising from the Gambia versus Myanmar Rohingya genocide case. Aaron Farrell Rosenberg is a visiting scholar with the Urban Morgan Institute for Human Rights at the University of Cincinnati School of Law. She is a member of New Lines Rohingya Legal Forum, and Thun Kin is the co-founder and president of the Burmese Rohingya Organization UK, which has been a leading voice for Rohingya people around the world, and he is also a member of the Rohingya Legal Forum. Mike A. Becker is an adjunct assistant professor of law at Trinity College Dublin, where he teaches public international law and international human rights law. He spent four years as an associate legal officer at the International Court of Justice. Thank you all for joining me. It's great to have you here today. And for anyone who is watching live on Twitter, if you have questions, please tweet them at @newlinesinst, and we'll get to them towards the end if there's time. Before we get to this event, I'm going to pass it over to Aaron, who has a few words to say in light of Russia's invasion and attacks on Ukraine today.
Thank you, Emily. I appreciate very much the opportunity to say a few words. As you mentioned, I am speaking here today in my private capacity and as a visiting scholar with the Urban Morgan Institute. However, in a different capacity, I do work for the McQuiggy Foundation, the foundation created by Nobel Peace Prize laureate Dr. Dennis McQuiggy. The McQuiggy Foundation supports survivor networks and survivor organizations of conflict-related sexual violence and has a chapter in Ukraine. I would like to take this opportunity to say to all of the viewers that what we are witnessing in Ukraine is deeply unsettling and scary. It is particularly so for those human rights defenders, such as the members of SAMA Ukraine, who have been outspoken in seeking justice for the crimes that have already been committed against them and find themselves now facing a deeply unsettling situation of the potential of being targeted for further violations. So while this event is not about Ukraine, I would ask that everyone listening keep the people of Ukraine in their thoughts, that we all stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine, and that we pay particular attention to those who are most at risk and vulnerable in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Aaron, and that important reminder that we must all stand with Ukraine on this incredibly dark day, and the reminder of those most at risk in war and conflict and what can happen to them if those who have the power to intervene do not intervene. So now moving forward to the event. If Thun Kin, if you can just give us a brief overview of the Rohingya genocide to kind of lay the foundation of this conversation, that would be great.
Thank you very much, Emily, and thank you to New Lines Institute organizing this event. A great honor joining with my friend Aaron and our friend also, Mike Becker, at this event. I'm Rohingya. I was born and brought up in western part of Burma, Arkana State. I left when I was about 17, and my grandfather was a member of parliament during democratic period of Burma. And my mother's grandfather was the first dash in northern Arkhan. I was not recognized as a citizen. I left when I was 17 from Arkana State. I have witnessed how Burmese military systematically destroying our community. Even though my grandfather was a member of parliament, my father did government service. We have a lot of, I mean, our forefathers have a lot of contribution for the country. And we have our land, culture, that's where I belongs to. I was not able to go to the university. This is one of the tool systematically to destroy our community. I'm lucky one to be here today. Like me, hundreds of thousands of Rohingya students, they couldn't go to the university, and their lives been destroyed. And so how Rohingya genocide started, I have to go on. Like 1962 in Burma, you know, 1948 in Burma, we got independence. After independence, Rohingya were recognized as an ethnic group, like other nationalities of Burma. That time, my grandfather was a member of parliament, and many Rohingya MPs were there. And even Rohingya leaders join in when the Constitution drafting committee, including my grandfather, was there. What's happened? 1962, generally, we took power, military coup power. He stripped up our ethnic rights. Rohingya language was broadcasted from Burma radio broadcasting program for two times a week. And then he step up, introduced 1982 citizenship law. After 1978, he did a king-dragon operation. On that time, 275,000, approximately 275,000 Rohingya fled to Bangladesh. Because of international outcry, the people were returned back to Burma in 1978 December. And then he introduced a 1982 citizenship law to taken away our citizenship rights. And then 1988, military coup power gained after popular uprising in Burma, as you all know. And after 1988, military coup power imposed restriction of movement, marriage, on education. That time, I witnessed, I was 80 years old. And until my age 17, I saw if I need to go from Washington to, you know, New York, for example, we need to get a pass. And that's what I faced, and I couldn't go to the university. And our land been confiscated by the military, and they brought prisoners, ex-prisoners, you know, to our land. They provide them. And Rohingya women, Rohingya people, my eldest brother's friends, they were not allowed to get married. They need to get a permission. And those all are unbearable situation we have passed through. So what's happened? 2010, so-called democratic reform came in Burma. International community jumping on and supporting that. And on that time, we have seen anti-Rohingya campaign were everywhere. These are illegal immigrant. Get rid of them from this country. 2012, on what many, many people in Burma using Facebook, military, and military, so-called USDP government, which is proxy of military, they campaigned against Rohingya propaganda. These are illegal immigrant. We must get rid of them. And including 969 groups and others, Ma Bata, you know. They did a lot of campaign. And what's as a result, 2012, a state organized violence happened. 140,000 Rohingya pushed to the camp. Their houses were burned down. Many Rohingya were killed. Until today, 140,000 Rohingya in Sittwe, which is capital of Arkana State, they are in camp without, not proper humanitarian, not without, not adequate humanitarian aid. They are getting it. And 2015, the first time in our history, since 1931, Rohingya were allowed to vote, and Rohingya were allowed to be member of parliament. 2015, Rohingya were taken away from political presentation. In 2016, October, when Rohingya militants group attacked some police post, under that, under that, under that banner, they killed thousands of Rohingya, 90,000 Rohingya fled. Again, in 2017, we have seen a billion people fled from Burma, and thousands of Rohingya women were raped. And more than 400 villages were burned down. And we have seen women misery, how Rohingya were expelled from the country. And I was in Bangladesh in first week of September to first week of October 2017. I witnessed how Rohingya fled from the country. From our organization, we publish a report, how the atrocities military carried out. And I interviewed many genocide survivors, and I couldn't sleep. When I come to the hotel, I can't sleep at all. I couldn't sleep at all. And in one family, out of seven, six were killed. In one family, out of four, three were killed. And it's unbelievable how they killed Tulatuli village, Mongnu village, and Godapin village, and Chukping, Retida. So that is very systematic, what military did. Well organized, well planned. They want to destroy our community with intention. Since 1962, starting until 2015. So first, a strip of our ethnic rights, denying our identity, our ethnicity. And then they deny our citizenship by taking away our ethnic rights. And then they impose restriction of movement, marriage, and education. They kept us in an open prison. And then they create popular violence, and they burn down our homes, and they push us to the camps, and they block humanitarian aid. And under that, those attacks, militant attacks, they kill thousands of people, which is mass killings. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a Rohingya. I'm a genocide survivor from Arkana State. So what I can see, what I witnessed when I was in Arkana State, what I experienced in Bangladesh 2017, according to my background, family history, what I have seen is this is very intentionally destroying our community. With intention, our community, Burmese military, destroying. Until today, this genocide is ongoing. We have seen two years now, ICJ hearing, provisional measures 2020, war, 2020, January 23rd order. Until today, they are not following, they are not obeying provisional measures. Instead, we have seen last few months, many Rohingya fled by boat to upper side of Burma. They were arrested, taken an illegal immigrant, Bengali, including women there. They sentenced them two to three years and humiliation. And Rohingya people in Arkana State until today, until now, until today, they are not allowed to get proper humanitarian aid. Restriction to get livelihood, not getting medical treatment, not allowing to go to the apedifil, not allowing to send their children to university or a school. This is happening 21st century. Two years now, we were waiting for justice. Until today, when I visited to the camp, many Rohingya told me unitedly, one voice, we want justice. We want justice. We want justice. Brother, spread the word to the international community to get our justice. We want to see this military bring to justice. They killed my sister. They raped my sister. They killed my father. In front of me, my brother was slaughtered. My sister was raped. Those thousands of those words I heard is very heartbreaking. So this is what we, as a Rohingya myself, this genocide is going on. And now we can see other parts of Burma, this military is committing crimes against humanity, crimes against humanity. But Rohingya are facing genocide in our country. So this is the situation, how Rohingya are until today facing this genocide. And that is how our brothers and sisters in Burma, 600,000, their lives are at risk. Our population, 80% fled from the country because of systematic intentional destruction by Burmese military since 1962. I stop here. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Thun Kin, for that comprehensive overview of the Rohingya genocide to kind of set the scene for this event. And I agree with you, you do not need to be a lawyer to understand that what has happened and what is happening and being done to the Rohingya is genocide. And so thank you once again for your comments. I want to move on to the actual case at the ICJ. And so for Aaron, can you talk about what is the issue with representation in this case? Because Myanmar is being represented by the junta. So can you talk about that and what exactly happened on Monday and this week?
Yes, thank you, Emily. And Thun Kin's incredibly powerful and moving remarks provide a really perfect, I think, segue and frame to what the issue is. As we heard from Thun Kin, the systematic persecution and denial of rights against the Rohingya people has been carried out across successive governments, different governments, but always by the state of Myanmar. And I think that's maybe a way to introduce what the actual controversy that has been going on before the ICJ is about. Myanmar as a state is a signatory to the genocide convention. And the ICJ regulates disputes between states. What has happened, as we know, is that with the coup in Myanmar, the military has by force, by military coup, overthrown the previous government and attempted to seize power and claim to be the legitimate government of Myanmar. And this has been a point of contention as to who, which entity would represent Myanmar at the ICJ, now that the previous government has been deposed. There have been filings on behalf of the NUG, which is a, not a government in exile exactly, but is a compilation of elected, previously elected officials as well as other representatives of Myanmar society who have petitioned court to be recognized as legitimate representative. The junta also requested the court to recognize it. And in the political realm, the UN General Assembly's credentialing committee also received competing credentialing claims from these two organizations, the NUG and the junta, and has deferred any decision, so they have not taken a decision. So that, in that context, what happened on Monday is that the ICJ has decided to proceed with the junta representing Myanmar. I don't want to go into too much detail because some of this, I think, will come out in our conversation. But maybe just a few brief remarks about this. First of all, I think it's important that everyone understand that the ICJ's decision to have the junta represent the state of Myanmar in terms of the proceedings at the ICJ does not have any impact on the ongoing decision of the UN General Assembly Credentialing Committee. The credentialing committee will meet later this year, I believe, and Mike may correct me, in either November or December is where it currently would stand. And the decision as to who represents Myanmar at the UN is in no way impacted by the ICJ's decision. So I think that's important to understand. There's no legal impact of it. And the second point I would make is that the junta is representing the state of Myanmar. That the fact that they are representing the state of Myanmar before the court does not change in any way the Gambia's case, which is against the state of Myanmar. And by this, I think it's important to understand when we talk about accountability or what we envision in terms of justice from the ICJ, that the junta representing the state of Myanmar does not mean that the case now proceeds in terms of establishing the responsibility of the junta. That is not what is happening. And as Thun Kin's very important explanation of the background shows, there are many actors, many actors, not only the junta, who have contributed and bear responsibility across Burmese society for the genocide against the Rohingya. And so while the junta is representing the state of Myanmar, ultimately, the question before the court is whether the state of Myanmar bears responsibility for the 2016, 2017 genocide.
You mentioned how there are many actors who are complicit in the genocide, and it's important to remember that the prior representative of Myanmar, Aung San Suu Kyi, was also complicit in genocide of the Rohingya, as were many, many other people. So Mike, if you have any comments to follow up on this, I'll pass it on to you. And then afterwards, can you also talk about the preliminary objections and the likelihood of success?
Sure. And thanks again to the New Lines Institute and to Emily for hosting this today. And it's a real privilege to be here with Thun Kin and Aaron on what's otherwise a very bad day for international law and international diplomacy. I broadly agree with what Aaron has said, and especially would emphasize this point, that the fact that the court has decided to proceed in the case with the junta representing Myanmar has no automatic legal consequences anywhere else. So international organizations can still decide whether or not they want to deal with the military regime or somebody else or no one. And individual states can still decide how they want to handle this question of the status of the junta, the status of the NUG, and so forth. I just wanted to highlight on that, on this representation issue. I think before the hearing, you know, some voices were really concerned that this was going to be a catastrophe if the junta were allowed to participate, that it somehow gives them legitimacy that they don't deserve, and they don't deserve that legitimacy. And I think some people were very hopeful that the court might specifically say something about this to emphasize the limited nature of the fact that the junta is there in the peace palace, representing Myanmar for these proceedings. They didn't say much, but President Cheon Don-hye, who's the presiding judge over the proceedings, made one point. And it's not something that would normally be said, so it jumps out for those of us who pay attention to ICJ cases very closely. She said, "States, not governments, are the parties before the court." Now, that language may seem too subtle. It may not be enough for people who would have liked to see the court take a more forceful stand. But I see it as something. I can only imagine that it was a carefully negotiated bit of language. And I think the message that it sends is to get at this idea that nothing more should be read into the fact that the junta is there than the fact that this allows the case to proceed. And I think there was a real emphasis in the Gambia's presentation on Wednesday to the effect that it is important that the case is allowed to move forward, as Thun Kin has said. Ever since, we're already more than two years since the case was filed, the Rohingya are waiting for some resolution to come from this process that a lot of hope has been placed in. And so if the options facing the court were to move ahead with the junta or simply suspend the case indefinitely, I can see the rationale for moving forward with the case. This goes to what the Gambia said on Wednesday, that justice delayed, is justice denied, and all of that. So I understand the concerns that people have about seeing the junta represented there and being treated with diplomatic politeness. But ultimately, I think the better point to emphasize here or put the focus on is the fact that, well, this allows the case to move forward. It allows these objections to be heard. And once those objections are rejected, and I'll turn to that now, the case can move to the merits. So Emily, you asked me to also talk about, now, what is actually the substance of what's going on in these hearings this week and then continuing through next Monday. So this is, these are called preliminary objections at the International Court of Justice. It's very common for the state that is the defendant, or we call them the respondent here, to make these objections, challenging the right of the court, the power of the court, to even hear the claims. And that comes back to the fact that the ICJ is a creature of consensus. Ultimately, states in some, one of three different ways have to consent to allowing disputes to be heard by the ICJ. So the issue here is all about whether or not Myanmar has in fact consented to have disputes about the genocide convention decided by the ICJ. Now, we know that Article 9 of the genocide convention is a provision that says that if you sign up to the genocide convention, you are agreeing to allow yourself to be sued at the ICJ in relation to a dispute relating to the interpretation or application or fulfillment of the convention. And Myanmar, when it joined the genocide convention back in the 1950s, didn't take a reservation to that Article 9. A reservation is a way to opt out of a treaty provision. And Myanmar did not opt out of Article 9. So that means that it can be sued under the genocide convention. And it equally means that Myanmar, if it wanted to, would be able to bring a case against another party to the genocide convention. Now Myanmar, not surprisingly, doesn't want to face these charges, that it has these accusations, these allegations, that it is in violation of the genocide convention because specifically of the actions that have been taken against the Rohingya in 2016, in 2017, the culmination of the long process that Thun Kin so eloquently explained in his presentation. So Myanmar has made four objections. I'll just talk about them very briefly here without getting into the details. One objection is essentially that, well, the Gambia is not the real party here because the Gambia is acting as a proxy for the organization for Islamic cooperation, an international organization. International organizations cannot be parties at the ICJ. Only states can be parties. I think this objection will go nowhere. First of all, all the objections that Myanmar is making now, Myanmar made the same objections back in December 2019 when the Gambia asked for provisional measures. And so we already have an indication of what the court thinks about these objections. And all of those objections were rejected then, but only on a kind of provisional prima facie basis, as we say. So Myanmar now has another chance to make these arguments more elaborately. And the proxy argument has been repeated, same thing we heard two years ago. And it's just not going to go anywhere. The court isn't concerned with the motivations that lie behind a state's decision to bring the case. But what I thought was really interesting from the hearings this week, on Wednesday, the Gambia, I thought, did a very good job of making the point that it isn't the OIC that is pushing the Gambia to bring this case. It's the Gambia that brought this issue to the OIC and understandably sought support from the OIC, and that's fine. So this is a sovereign act of the Gambia, and there's, I can't imagine this objection going anywhere. The second objection, and it relates to the third objection, these have to do with a concept called standing. So this is whether the Gambia has the legal right to bring a case, even though the genocide convention provides for this dispute settlement clause. There's a separate question about whether a state like the Gambia, which is not what we call a specially affected state, it hasn't been directly injured in some way by what Myanmar is alleged to do. Citizens of the Gambia are not the victims of the acts that are attributed to the state of Myanmar. And so Myanmar's theory is that, well, only a state that is injured or specially affected could bring such a case. And Myanmar says the only state that might fit that definition is Bangladesh. But Bangladesh isn't bringing this case, and in fact, Bangladesh couldn't bring the case because they did take a reservation to that part of the Genocide Convention that allows for the ICJ to decide these types of disputes. This is another objection that was raised before. I'm pretty confident, I'm quite confident that the court will reject this and emphasize, as the court has said in other cases before and in the earlier phase of this case, that the Genocide Convention is a special kind of treaty that creates a special kind of obligation. Obligations ergo omnes partes, which means that all other parties, all other contracting parties to the Genocide Convention, have an interest. It's a common interest, but it's also an individual interest that all of those states share. An interest in seeing every other party to the Genocide Convention live up to its obligations. And so the idea there is that the Gambia, or many of the other states that are parties to the Genocide Convention, nearly anyone could have brought this case. And it's the Gambia that had the wherewithal or the political courage to do so. I think the court will reject this, this theory that only injured states or states that are seeing their own nationals or citizens affected in some way. The court will reject that. This has been a trend in the court's case law over the past decade or so, and I don't see them going back on it. A related argument about standing is that Myanmar did take a reservation to a different provision of the Genocide Convention. This is a more technical argument that I won't get into here. It's about a distinction between the ICJ dispute settlement clause in Article Nine and another provision, Article Eight, which deals with the ability of states to call upon other organs of the United Nations to take action if there's a concern about genocide taking place. Myanmar has come up with a novel theory that because Myanmar took a reservation to that other provision, that essentially blocks non-injured states. So they consent to an injured state suing them, but not to a non-injured state like the Gambia suing them. This is a pretty strained, legalistic, complicated argument. They've made it much more elaborate this time than they did back at the provisional measures phase. So I think it will require a little bit more work on the part of the court to deal with all aspects of this argument that Myanmar is now putting forward. I still think it will be rejected. I thought the Gambia did an effective job on Wednesday explaining that one provision deals with the political organs of the United Nations. That's the one that Myanmar has opted out of. And the other provision deals with the jurisdiction of the ICJ. And that trying to overlay this idea about injured and non-injured states onto that distinction just doesn't find support in the text. The trickiest part of it will be to try to make sense of why Myanmar did take a reservation to Article Eight and what that actually means. Because Myanmar has put forward some evidence to try to show that this is what they thought they were doing back in 1955. And this will raise an interesting legal issue for the court, which is how much stock do you put in the intention or understanding of a state when it makes a treaty reservation? If that treaty reservation is based on a misunderstanding of the treaty in the first place, a misconception of what the provision is doing? Because that might be what is taking place here. It seems problematic for a state to benefit from a reservation that it made to a provision that it completely misinterpreted in the first place. And that might explain why no other state, no other party to the Genocide Convention took a reservation to that Article Eight provision. Myanmar is the only one, which suggests to me that the understanding that Myanmar may have had of that provision back in the 1950s is completely out of step with how it was generally understood. The last, I'll deal with this very briefly. The last objection is this idea that the Gambia didn't do enough before filing the case to establish a clear bilateral dispute between the two states. And the Myanmar lawyers have tried to add on, I think, additional requirements that don't exist in the text of the Genocide Convention, that don't exist in the court's case law. The Gambia did a number of things to establish a dispute before they brought the case, including sending a diplomatic note a month before they did so, that I think makes it absolutely clear that they met the threshold to establish a dispute. So I can't see the court putting any stock in that at all. So the only objection that I think I'm interested to hear what the parties say in the second round of the hearing this Friday and next Monday is how they follow up on that, those arguments about the Article Eight reservation. I'm curious to see what else they say there. But ultimately, I think it's very likely that Myanmar's objections will be rejected, and that allows the case to go forward. The last point I'd make on that is that we should remember that the provisional measures order back in 2020 was decided unanimously. So all seventeen judges sitting on the court found that, at least at a provisional basis, the court had jurisdiction over this case. And that was dealing with the same objections that we see here. I don't think that the court's judgment this time will be unanimous. I think a few of the judges will come over to some of Myanmar's arguments, particularly relating to standing. But I cannot imagine enough judges doing so to change the result here. So I fully expect the court to reject the preliminary objections, which will then allow the case to get back on schedule. And we can talk later maybe about what that schedule might look like going forward.
Thank you, Mike, for that overview. I have a much better understanding of the situation now, and I'm sure that our viewers do as well. And a reminder that Mike worked at the ICJ for four years, so has a unique understanding of what goes on there. So it will be interesting to see what happens tomorrow and what happens on Monday. I want to move back to Tunkin. In your opening remarks, you mentioned how Rohingya have said to you that we just want justice. So the Rohingya are excluded as agents in this process. They're not actually part of this case, privy to certain information around their own situation. How are Rohingya trying to get genocide, trying to get justice for the genocide? And what exactly does justice look like for them, in your opinion?
Thank you. It's a very good question. As far as what I learned and as far as as a member of community, first thing we want to bring, those responsible to justice. Whoever killed my brothers and sisters, you know, their father, their wife, and their sisters were raped and must bring to justice. Secondly, as far as I know, this ICJ is especially a state to state, so it's not individually something bringing. So as a victim, I'm telling that is one case going on ICC, another one is Argentina, where we filed the case. And for this case, what we are meaning here is we want to return back our homeland, where it belongs to, with the rights. And Burmese military burned down more than 400 villages. And we want to get compensation. And we want to return. Rohingya wants to return their own villages with safety and dignity. And with restoring the rights what Burmese military government taken from them. This is very important that it's been like three times, 1978, 200, approximately, as I mentioned earlier, 275,000 Rohingya fled from Burma to Bangladesh. And in 1991, 92, more than 235,000 Rohingya fled to Bangladesh. And this time, a million people fled. So of course, we want to return and we want to get those rights firstly. And same time, we want to bring, of course, there are other cases here. ICC, which is deportation case in International Criminal Court. Burmese military committed crimes here, and those people were fled to Bangladesh as a signatory of ICC Bangladesh, you know, there is a case. So that case, we want to bring also criminals to ICC. And our case, Argentina, which I file in our organization, we file. And we open that, we filed that case to 2019, November, same week, when ICC opened investigation, the same week when ICJ filed the case at the Hague. So that case is Rohingya initiative as a victim. We filed the case. We want to, we want to, we want to, Rohingya boys need to be hard. Rohingya group, you know, filing the case is one thing. We want to see that, we want to bring military criminals who feel that Rohingya are not capable to do anything. As a victim, we want to bring them. That case also, last December, last November, that investigation was opened after two years. And I testified last December, I went to Buenos Aires, and I gave the testimony, my personal history, what I faced in our kind of state, and also what Rohingya faced in Burma, especially Tula Tuli massacre. Tula Tuli massacre, Mongnu village, Chupin village, and Godapin village, where thousands of Rohingya, men, women, and children were burned alive, thrown to the fire. So those are focusing on that case. So I, we submitted the investigation, how should be to the court and what with the location, with the timeline, with the location, and who are responsible in this, who are the main perpetrators? So we submitted that. Through form, all these cases are very important for the Rohingya justice. Not only, I mean ICC one, ICC, ICJ, Argentina. So we are happy to see that. Like our friends, like Aaron, like Mike Becker, and other friends, you know, who are supporting these cases, we are very happy. And same time, international community supporting Canada, Netherlands jumping on the case to support, including Maldives. And we would like to see more support from the governments, especially. I mean, we suffered for so long, many decades, as I mentioned earlier. One thing I point to, I want to point here is how many more years we need to wait to get justice? And how many more years Rohingya genocide survivor need to live in a squall condition in Bangladesh, now four years now? And governments, many governments should join in this case. Physically, practically, they have to do whatever they can. I know that some governments join Canada and Netherlands, but we want to see more practical action from them, not only join for the name of shame. Real practical action needed. So long I've been advocating for our people. We are talking about supporting justice. They all, always governments, we heard from them, supporting justice. But we have seen various small country, Gambia is the only one astute with the Rohingya to fight for justice. We will never forget their support and their howl and their bravery to fight for this case. And we want to see more universal jurisdiction case. Not only in Argentina, want to see other countries. Because for decades, this persecution, military enjoying impunity. This impunity must end. To end this impunity, these cases are very important. Because of that impunity, military enjoying, international community did not do enough. We have seen 2021 February, the coup happened. And now we can see other people of Burma, our brothers and sisters from Shin community, Karani community, Kashin community, other parts of Burma. Every day, we are seeing how these criminal gangs, SAC is, Ming online and top militaries are killing the people every day. So of course, we speaking for the justice for the Rohingya. When we talk about justice for the Rohingya, not only for the, when we talk about justice, not only for the Rohingya, for all the people of Burma, we want to see this justice. As we are together with all the people of Burma today, to get rid of this military, to bring to the justice, to fight against these terrorist group in Burma. So I want to conclude here is we need much more international support for these justice cases. And then military, of course, there are sanctions, we appreciate that. Cutting military aid, that is very good, welcome in a step. Same time, we want to see that more a stronger action on justice issue joining from international community. And that will help for the Rohingya what they want. And by that, by getting justice, Rohingya can return to their homeland, to their country where it belongs to. Same time, all the people of Burma, you know, will be, the military will end the impunity. And all the people of Burma, you know, will be, will be safe from these military crimes every day people are facing in Burma. I stop here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tunkin. And this is an important reminder that there are 152 states, state parties to the Genocide Convention, all of which have a duty to prevent and to punish the crime of genocide. I also hope to see more action from the international community on the Rohingya genocide in the coming months and years. Back to Aaron, can you briefly comment on Myanmar's arguments about a requirement of a state being specifically affected? And then afterwards, can you touch on how with the junta representing Myanmar, how will that affect carrying out the provisional measures?
Absolutely. Thank you, Emily. And before I touch on those two points, I did just want to highlight an incredibly important point that Tunkin made, which is that while the ICJ case is strictly limited, and I think this is important for all those seeking justice to understand, to violations of the Genocide Convention, and does not touch on other crimes committed by the military junta. For example, in a post-coup context, that is precisely why some of these other justice mechanisms and avenues are so very important. These, all of these different avenues should be viewed as complementary in order to address the full scope of criminality. Not, certainly including the Rohingya genocide, but not limited to that. So also including all of the other So also including all of the other crimes that have been committed against the people of Burma. And in that regard, I really salute Tunkin's work in terms of the universal jurisdiction case in Argentina, it is incredibly important. Very briefly, I did just want to, uh, join in the remarks that, that, uh, Mike made regarding, uh, the preliminary objections. I think as Mike set out, Article eight is quite interesting. I think ultimately it's actually not particularly important to the question of, of standing or jurisdiction, so it's, it's a bit of a red herring though, for us legal minds, it is quite fascinating. But, um, more fundamentally, I did just want to comment on Myanmar's arguments about the issue of an injured state and the way that they have read or attempted to read nationality into, um, standing. And while we understand, um, and much has been written quite powerfully about the sort of unique, um, role and interest of, of the international community in supporting the genocide convention, I did just want to speak about the crime of genocide itself and to emphasize why this argument in my mind is quite, um, uh, problematic and not persuasive. The crime of genocide, as you know, um, can be committed both in wartime and in peacetime. And it also has no international nexus requirement. Genocide does not need to involve more than one state. And the situation in Myanmar is exactly that situation, a genocide of a state being carried out against its own citizens. There are international, uh, or genocides that have international dimensions, but that is not an element of the crime of genocide. And I would argue that it is completely unsupported to create out of thin air, um, uh, and, and element to, um, a crime which is already perfectly defined. And, but more importantly, just the simple moral fact that what Myanmar is arguing would essentially exempt genocides committed by a state against their own citizens from the purview and, and protections of the genocide convention. And that I think is quite clearly contrary to the very purpose of the genocide convention itself. So I just did want to emphasize on that particular argument, how unpersuasive I believe that it is. Turning to, um, your question about the provisional measures, and this goes all the way back to the first question that you asked me about what is the, what has happened with representation? So the provisional measures, as you've heard, uh, referenced by both Mike and Tunkin, as Tunkin said, they were issued January twenty-third, twenty-twenty. And provisional measures for those listening are, um, essentially, uh, in their orders by the court that have immediate effect, meaning that even while the case is pending or being considered on the merits, so there has been no determination as to whether the genocide convention has been violated, the court can issue orders to one or both parties, for that matter, um, which are provisional measures, um, with instructions as to certain, uh, behaviors or acts that they need to comply with. Um, and that is what has happened in this case. The Gambia requested provisional measures, um, and, uh, the court granted four of the six requested. One of those importantly, or two of those, I guess I would say that are, they're all important, but the first and the last, I'll just emphasize, the first being that Myanmar, um, must take now all measures, um, possible to prevent the recurrence of genocide. The court found that the Rohingya are at serious risk of genocide now. So we're not simply talking about justice and accountability for the genocide allegedly already committed, but that the Rohingya in this moment actually remain at serious risk of the recurrence of genocide, or as Myanmar would argue, the occurrence of genocide. And the fourth one is the, uh, preservation of evidence, um, for the ICJ proceedings. The fact that the junta is now representing the state of Myanmar means that the junta is responsible for convincing the court that it is complying, or that the state of Myanmar is complying with the provisional measures orders. So one of the, I think, potential benefits, um, or it can be argued as a benefit of the court proceeding with the junta, is that rather than viewing it strictly through a lens of that the junta is, um, you know, able to be present in the, in the court and, and is given some sort of recognition in the court proceedings, is that it also carries obligations that the junta has to now accept by participating, um, as the representative of the state and, and most importantly is regarding the obligation to prevent genocide. There is a very interesting question moving forward as to, um, the actual ability of the junta, um, to, um, ensure compliance with the provisional measures. It's a question of whether they do in fact have effective control, um, which relates quite intimately to the question of representation, um, and the legitimacy of a, of a government. But I think that this is an opportunity and I, and I would maybe end on a bit of a, a plea or a, uh, reiteration of something I've said many, many times, that the fact that the junta is, um, representing the state of Myanmar and what we know publicly of their behavior post-coup in terms of the commission of widespread crimes, in terms of the reimposition and strengthening of, for example, as Tunkin mentioned, movement restrictions on the Rohingya remaining within Myanmar, um, restrictions on access to, uh, medical care, um, that are affecting not only the Rohingya, but, but the Burmese people more broadly, that there is a, um, need for a tremendous amount of scrutiny and attention as to whether the, uh, the state of Myanmar and the junta, um, are complying with the provisional measures, um, whether their actions are in fact, uh, fall within all possible measures to prevent genocide. And one of the ways that that scrutiny, um, could be quite heightened would be by making the compliance reports filed with the court by the junta public, so that other states can see what the junta is saying that it is doing, but so that most importantly, and to pick up again on what Tunkin mentioned, the Rohingya themselves are able to see what it is that the junta is saying that, that it is doing, able to respond and able to essentially, um, engage, um, in an active sense in these proceedings, at least in the potentially diplomatic or political realm, to respond and push back against, um, the junta's, um, assertions to the court. So I think that that is incredibly important to date, all of the provisional measures reports have been confidential. If the junta is recognized as representing the state of Myanmar, I think it is simply strengthens the need for transparency and publicity of their reports.
Thank you, Aaron. And Mike, can you very briefly, um, tell us when you think the judgment is expected and what are the next steps in this case?
Sure. And I'll just say, I completely echo Aaron's, uh, comment there, and I've written and spoken about this before too, that I think it'd be much better if those implementation reports were made publicly available. And Aaron makes a really important point that there is kind of an inconsistency in trying to argue that, uh, the junta doesn't have effective control, yet the junta also needs to be held responsible for living up to those provisional measures. So based on past practice, I think a judgment on the, um, preliminary objections can be expected by late June or early July. So before the summer, kind of the court usually has a brief recess at the end of the summer. So I'd say they will finish it before then. What that means then is that if things go as I expect and Myanmar's objections are rejected, the court will set a new schedule because the parties haven't finished submitting all of their written, uh, arguments on the actual claims on the merits. So the claims that the Gambia made when it opened the case. And so I was trying to work out, you know, what the timing for that would be. And it's, if we imagine that, um, the court decides the jurisdictional question by July, I think it's probably likely that Myanmar would be given something like nine months to submit what's called the counter memorial. So that would be its big written submission responding to a set of legal arguments that the Gambia has already filed. That takes us to March of two thousand twenty-three. And after that, there will probably be a second round of written submissions in this case. Probably each side might get something like six months, so that's another year. I know this sounds like a long time, but that brings us to say, the first quarter of, uh, two thousand twenty-four. The case would then finally be fully briefed and ready for the court to have an oral hearing on the merits. So we could probably expect that to happen sometime during two thousand twenty-four. That might involve, um, witnesses, fact witnesses or expert witnesses brought by the Gambia in particular. Uh, so that might be a quite kind of elaborate, um, oral hearing by ICJ standards. And what all of that means, I think, is that a judgment in this case on the merits is something to be expected in the first half of two thousand twenty-five. So I realize that still seems like a very long time away, um, but that is the pace of justice in these types of proceedings. And something that could cause even a little bit more delay is if, as has been mentioned here, some other states decide to join the case formally, because so far states have only indicated that they intend to do so, Canada, Netherlands, Maldives, that won't necessarily add a lot of time, but it adds some time. So that's where I see things going. Uh, I think judgment, a, a final judgment on this is probably pushed back now until two thousand twenty-five, because in part because of the delay that has taken place here. The court holding these hearings now, these hearings should have taken place sometime last year, but there was some delay attributable perhaps in part to COVID-nineteen, but I think more attributable to the fact that, um, the coup took place and there was, um, a bit of a slowdown in proceedings after that.
Thank you, Mike. Um, in our last few minutes, I want to pass it back to Tunkin for any closing remarks you may have. And also just to, you know, as Mike mentioned, the pace of justice, can you tell us about the humanitarian situation in Bangladesh that is really important to keep in mind as we make progress with justice?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, this is of course important. I want to, before I jump in on that question, I want to point out a few things here on ICJ, this issue regarding on the court. The way the court, we, we are a victims, we are genocide survivors. Here we can see Rohingya voices not being heard or we feel no consultation properly in many places, particularly now the court. They submitted the six-month report. Of course, we also, our organization, we did several briefings of six-month provisional measure violation by Myanmar. We have never seen any report. Why not in public? Do we not have a voice? Do we cannot see what the court doing? I mean, that I, we want to see more consultation with genocide survivors, who are the main victims for this case, that I want to point out that issue. Same time, on representation, we are together with the people of Burma. In this fight, to get rid of military, in Burma, we have unprecedented united voice to get rid of this military from the, from Myanmar. And we do not want to see any legitimacy given to this terrorist regime. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know how the judges decided that. I can't say that, I do not know. As a victim, huh, my, our concern, that's one thing I can see. Same time, you know, we want to see in future more discussions or consultation with the victims. That is one thing. And regarding on humanitarian crisis in Bangladesh, as you all know, one million Rohingya people in a squall condition, we appreciate UK, US, their leadership for humanitarian support and EU and others. That humanitarian support is not really enough because there are many children, forty percent are children. They are not getting proper, they are not getting education at all, a growing population without education. How we can expect our future if our backbone of the community education is not there? What will happen to these children after ten, fifteen years in camp? And when we appreciate Bangladesh government giving shelter, of course, they give a shelter and protect, uh, a, a shelter and support to the Rohingya survivors. Same time, they should lift restrictions on movement and education and medical treatment, those lift, those restrictions, Bangladesh should lift them. And international community should do more broader way to support Bangladesh, more consultation with Rohingya people. How can move forward for one million genocide survivors in camp? What a strategy they should discuss because very near future, I can't see that, not near future, maybe in a few years' time, we can return to Burma. Because architect of genocide, Ming online, current terrorist military leader is in power. He is the person who order to kill thousands of Rohingya, who order to rape thousands of Rohingya women, who order to burn more than four hundred villages, who order to burn alive many Rohingya children. So how Rohingya can return when the military is, military coup happened in Burma? So we will not be able to return very near future. For the long run, humanitarian and social empowerment, Rohingya genocide survivor is on the frontline. Same time, international community should focus. Otherwise, we, our people will face to more destruction on everything, no education, no medical care, and many things can happen. The atmosphere is not good in Bangladesh, that area. People can, many women were used by women traffickers. So there are many other things. I stop here, I can't, I, if I tell, I gotta be much more. So this is very important from also international community, Bangladesh government. When we appreciate, they should really focus on to support and to empower Rohingya children for their education. I stop here, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tunkin, for again reminding us of the human cost of this genocide. It's incredibly important, as you say, to keep Rohingya voices at the center of this conversation as we continue forward and find hopefully more avenues and more paths toward justice. I want to thank you all so much for joining me today. Thank you, Aaron, thank you, Tunkin, thank you, Mike. I really appreciated your comments and learning from you during this event.